I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 4th, 2014, at 6:30 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Bob Russell, a family of faith church. Wherever one stands, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come together tonight in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, thanking you for the opportunity to present the needs of the people of Tarpon Springs. We ask for guidance and wisdom for each member of the city council and provide patience for those presenting their concerns and seeking answers. Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in a country allows us to govern ourselves for the freedoms that we enjoy protected by those who have served and given their lives from our armed forces. Tonight, I ask for a special blessing on those that are within conflicts throughout the world, those in Sudan, Democrat of Congo, Eastern Burma, Syria, Afghanistan, Iran, and the Ukraine. So much we take for granted, we worry ourselves on such small trivial items when these people are in the middle of conflicts which they have no say-so in it, but yet could cost them their lives. We're asking for a blessing for those who risked their lives so that we may enjoy ours, our police force, firefighters, paramedics, and medical team members. As we enjoy our guests from the north, keep our streets safe and let those use good judgment while operating a motor vehicle. We ask for a special blessing on the families that breathe the loss of their loved ones for this past weekend, two here in Tarpon Springs and two on motorcycle riders in Brandon. Heavenly Father, we ask this in Jesus' name and we all say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, my nation under God and in his name, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now go to our public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm not here, I'm Joel Rock at 39650 US 19 North. I'm not here on behalf of the words tonight, I'm here on behalf of myself on a subject that I think is fairly important. Last year, after the election, I wrote a letter to the editor of the Tampa Bay Times and for whatever reason, they never published it. But inasmuch as we're in another campaign season, I think it's very appropriate to read it to you, it'll take about 30 seconds, and hopefully it sinks in to all the people that it affects. And I entitled it "Voter turnout appalling." In a city with a population of 23,767, a voter registration of 16,914, and a vote of only 3,003 in the recent commission election, a scant 17 percent, I fail to understand the apathy of the city's residents. Of the 6,728 absentee ballots, they're called mail ballots now, mailed in, only 2,321 were returned, and each of those that were returned was a waste of money because I understand it cost 60 cents to about $1.60 to about $2.00 each, so it was a waste of money. And in effect, only 683 voters physically went to the polling stations, 683. You know, with the hundreds of thousands who didn't get to vote in the 2012 presidential election because of the hampering roadblocks, you would think that everybody would clamor to exercise their privilege. The courage of candidates running for office deserved more, a lot more. One of the penalties for refusing to participate in politics, there's a quote from Plato, it says, "One of the penalties, refusing to participate in politics, is that you end up being governed by your inferiors." Fortunately for us, we've been lucky so far. I hope the rest of this city listens to this and turns out and honors the candidates for a change. Thank you.
If there are no other public comments, we'll go to our proclamations. First one is Girl Scouting Week, and this proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas March 12th, 2014 marks the 102nd anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia, whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. And whereas through Girl Scouting, girls gain courage, confidence, and character who make their local communities and the world a better place. Whereas more than 3.2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 102 years of this American tradition, with nearly 60 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now therefore, I, David O. Archie, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby applaud the commitment of Girl Scouting, the commitment Girl Scouting has made to America's girls and proudly proclaim the week of March 9th through the 15th, 2014, as Girl Scout Week." Any public comments on this item? Then we'll go to our second proclamation, and this one is for procurement month. And this proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas, in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationship with suppliers and other departments within the organization. And whereas, public procurement professionals in the City of Tarpon Springs, government and in other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic conditions in the United States with cumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas, the Procurement Services Division in the City of Tarpon Springs is committed to provide high caliber strategic logistic and operational support of all departments within the City of Tarpon Springs, and whereas, the Procurement Services Division in the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, transparency, established by the Institute for Public Procurement as the fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession. Whereas, NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as Purchasing Month to further expand the awareness of the procurement profession's role to government officials, the general public, and business and corporate leaders. Now therefore, I, David O. Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 as Procurement Month in the City of Tarpon Springs and urge all citizens to join the city commission in recognizing the role of procurement and materials management profession within business, industry, and government." Mr. Jacobs.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to invite you all to our annual trade fair on the 28th of this month. It's a Friday, 11 o'clock till 2 o'clock. We have our contract vendors set up booths across the street and show their latest wares to the folks in the field who don't normally get an opportunity to attend trade shows. So please make it if you can. Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? If not, we go to consent agenda. Three is satisfactory release of liens, attorney fees, Thompson, Seismologist, Allison hearing, LLP invoice number 74470. Special events, antique and treasure sale, Chamber of Commerce, March 22nd. Holy Friday procession, St. Nicholas Orthodox Cathedral, April 18th. Award bid number 140041-B-CM Sewer main and affluent water pipeline rehabilitation cured in place pipe, CIPP Safford Avenue and Seminole Boulevard. 70's renewed file number 130058-C-TK sale of scrap metal utilized in the City of Tampa contract number 40112513. Any items that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, are there any public comments on any of these items? Chair.
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Yes, on the number six, the award bid for the cured in place pipe, I don't know if you know about this process, but you can actually watch videos about it online. They take a material and they pull it off of a roll and it's flat, and then they can get it through the sewer line and then inflate it with air or water, all right? And then they heat it and it seals the inside of the sewer pipe. It's ingenious technology. So it puts, it's basically like running a PVC pipe through whatever's damaged out there. So the reason I'm telling you this is that that area that has already ruptured is just the beginning. So this material can be used preemptively in any other place in the city that we've identified where the wrong material was used. So if you know where the rest of the bad sewer pipes are, you can put this stuff in beforehand, before it breaks. So to consider budgeting for that, first you have to identify how many places was that wrong material utilized, and then you can go in and use this process to fix it before it breaks. This is the best way to solve the problem. Otherwise, we're going to have millions and millions of dollars of digging up these pipes and then patching them after the fact. It's better to do it preemptively. Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion. Move for approval. Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next, we have special consent agenda. Item is award bid number 140035-B-CM roadway curb and sidewalk reconstruction, East Live Oak Street and Safford Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, this is on the special consent because of the value of it. This is the work associated with the Safford Avenue repairs out there. This will be the repaving after the underground work is complete. Mr. Funtions in the audience, if there's any questions.
Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Funtion? Any public comments on this item? The chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number nine, increased RFP number 090100-P-Job Order Contracted.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this is on because of the value of it being over $200,000. This is to complete the repairs that have been underway for some time. And again, Mr. Funtions in the audience, if there are any questions.
I really don't have any questions. I know Mr. Funtion, as well as all of us, will be glad when this project is finally over and on to something else, you know? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Funtion? Any public comments on this item? The chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Ordinance resolution item number 10, Resolution 2014-06, Application 14-03, Amendment to Conditional Use, 630B, South Pinellas Avenue, quasi-adjudicial.
Resolution 2014-06, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application number 1403, expanding the hours for the on-premise consumption of beer and wine in the outdoor seating area for property located at 630 South Pinellas Avenue, Unit B, providing for findings and providing for an effective dates. Resolution 2014-06 by title only. It says quasi-adjudicial. Where the commission acts in a quasi-adjudicial rather than a legislative capacity, at such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law but rather to apply law that has already been established. In this hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure which will be followed at this hearing. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record, and testimony in questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine the city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony to witnesses. The city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff may make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses at this point in the proceedings. A motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this time, I would ask the commission to disclose any ex parte communications on this application, please. Seeing none, I'd ask anyone who plans to testify tonight, please stand and be sworn. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is application 14-03 for property at 630B South Pinellas Avenue. This is an existing cafe that has previously had an alcohol license granted. It's actually been in front of the board twice in the last couple of years. The first time the license was granted, the outdoor service was limited to 8 o'clock PM for the beer and wine for the on-premise consumption in that very small outdoor area. And then in 2013, the applicant came back to the Board of Commissioners. They added the outdoor seating area with the fenced-in patio, and again, a condition was placed on the resolution that restricted the beer and wine service for the outdoor dining area to end at 9 o'clock PM. And those hours, I don't think there was anything magical about them. At that point in time, we had simply asked the applicant what they wanted to do, and that's what they had indicated in their application, so it was put into the resolution as a condition. They are back before us now, simply asking to extend the hours for alcohol service for beer and wine in the outdoor seating area to midnight, and so that is the crux of the application. Under the standards for review, we don't really find any issues anticipated. This is commercially zoned property, surrounded by commercially zoned property. We don't really expect any adverse effects on the neighborhood, our ability to provide services, or anything that's listed in the various review criteria for alcohol licenses. We don't find any issues with compatibility and with increasing the hours of operation for the outdoor service until midnight. Planning and zoning board did review this at their meeting on February 24th. There were some general questions regarding potential safety with homeless in the area, outdoor music, and clarification on ingress and egress to the patio. I mean, really, it was, all those were answered to the board's satisfaction. They did recommend approval by a vote of 7-0. The staff recommendation is to approve the application to amend the conditional use to extend the hours of outdoor alcohol service to end at midnight. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have at the appropriate time of the hearing. Thank you. We've had no public comments on this for or against on the public record. Thank you.
Do you wish to make a presentation of any kind? You can ask questions of Ms. Vincent, or you can make a presentation of your own. It's your election.
My name is Helen Friedakis. Do you need my address?
Please.
1173 Brook Drive, East Dunedin, Florida. And I'm here representing the applicant, and we would, we hope this gets approved because you know, you can have a sandwich or a meal with a beer, like a hot dog with a beer. That's all.
Fair enough.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Vincent, do you have any questions for the applicant, please?
Yes, sir.
Are there any members of the public opposing the application? Seeing none, any members in support of the application? Does anybody wish to make a closing statement?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Tarepani.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, I know I asked you something along the lines of this before when we saw this application, but on the layout, we're shown dumpster. Is that within the fenced-in area where the seating is, or is that separate?
The dumpster, it's not inside the seating area, no.
Okay, so that's, but it is fenced in?
Yes.
And then on the corner where it gets cut off, that's due to the visibility triangle?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions that anyone else? You know, I'd say that, you know, if I've had a chance to look at this a couple of times, and the thing that's good is that since the business has been there, there hasn't been any real problems about it. As Ms. Vincent said, that time was just arbitrary time that was placed on there based upon their thought, and hopefully this means that the business is continually growing, then that's why they want to do this. With that, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next, we go to.
Thank you.
Item number 11, Ordinance 2014-02, Annual Update to Capital Improvement Schedule of the City's Comprehensive Plan, and this is first reading.
This is Ordinance 2014-02, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan as required by Chapter 163.3177 Florida statutes, providing for other modifications that may arise from review of this ordinance at the public hearing and/or with other responsible parties, providing for severability and providing an effective date. It's the first reading of Ordinance 2014-02. Second reading will be held on March 18, 2014, and was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September 9, 2013, and March 5, 2014. Let's go.
Thank you. This is Ordinance 2014-02. This is the annual amendment to the five-year capital improvement schedule as required by Florida statutes. This basically amends the capital improvements plan, excuse me, capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. The projects that are listed in this that we update annually come directly out of the city's annual adopted budget, the capital improvements program. The only things that are listed are projects that affect levels of service for the city, water, sewer, roads, things of that nature, even recreation. So not every little capital project is listed in the table, only the ones that affect levels of service that were required to report to the state of Florida. I'm not going to go through this line by line. If you have questions about a particular line item, I'll try to answer it if I can. I'm not 100% up on all these because they come from various departments, but if I can't answer it, we'll get you an answer before second reading. And Planning and Zoning Board did review this on February 24th. There were some general comments concerning the need for sidewalks along Riverside Drive and Wickham Boulevard, the need for sewer, municipal sewer in the Tewks Road area, pottles at the intersection of Gross and Orange. These were just general discussions about things I think that the board would like to see in the future, perhaps added into the capital, to be considered as we're doing our budgeting for capital projects in the future, and the board did recommend approval by a vote of 7-0. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Vincent? Mr. Tarepani.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, on the Hope Street, Athens Street pedestrian improvements?
Mm-hmm.
And I understand that this is just kind of a formality to have this presentation tonight, but I was wondering, it says for fiscal year 2014, 2015 is when we have the money slated, and it says the phase is in the design and construction phase. And my question is, if it's in the design phase, are we doing the design in-house? And if we're not doing it in-house, who's doing the design? And then do you have an idea timeframe-wise when the design will be available to the board?
Thank you.
Let me try to answer your question. Some of this, I think, is going to be accomplished as part of the SpongeDocks improvement. As you know, from Dotacanese to just past Cross, we're going to be doing some improvements in there. So some elements of the design are part of what we've already slated to put out the bid. And then I think the city manager intends to bring the remaining pieces, because I think the, speaking from what I understand, is what I think they're trying to do is create the connection between the downtown and the docks, and that final piece would be something that would be brought to the board probably next fiscal year.
So this $300,000 is aside from the money that we have slated for the docks?
That's correct.
This SpongeDocks improvement?
Separate item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Vincent? Any public comments on this item?
Peter Delax, 514 Ashland Avenue. A couple of things as a person in the audience looking at this capital improvement plan. The attorney said this is an amendment. For those of us who aren't seeing this all the time, I would like to have seen what was previously on the capital improvement schedule to see what was actually changed or amended. Now, as far as having looked at a couple of things, on the second page, the second item says Pinellas Trail Extension from North Anclot Nature Park, $400,000 for the year 1415. And then if you go two pages later, at the bottom, there's another entry. That one's out of recreation space, the first one's out of transportation, for another $400,000 for the same project. So one question would be, is this a total of $800,000, or what's the whole story on that? Also, when I look through this, I'm not sure if this is new, and I would, on the board myself, want to know more, but on the infrastructure schedule improvements, Table 13, the third one says reclaim water tank for this coming 1314 year for Tarpon Springs Golf Course, new reclaimed water tank and pump station, $3.247 million. I've been to a number of meetings, I don't know, maybe y'all talked about it during budget, but this is the first time I've heard about a reclaimed water tank at the golf course. And I have always supported reclaimed water. My concern would be if we're going to spend $3.2 million for a water tank, are we doing anything to expand the water, the reclaimed water structure so more people can take advantage of this water that we're storing? We already have two tanks here, that'll be a third one. Now, I understand the third one can help with the golf course and the pond there and such of that nature, but to build water tanks to hold water and know where to put it is not cost-effective. So again, I don't know if that's a new item or if it was on previously, and it's an amended thing. I notice on the page after, water distribution assessment. That's an assessment of the city's water distribution for $131,000 in this year. Mr. Roboski earlier eloquently spoke to a possibility of looking at those city areas, so I'm glad the city is on top of that and will take further actions in that regard. Lastly, last page, last item, alternative water supply, land acquisition and deep injection well, $5.05 million. This is This is a new item added to this project. When we originally went out for bonds for about $42 to $45 million, this was not in the projected costs. I would like to see a breakdown of, personally, as a citizen, of what's already been spent so far out of the construction fund and the loan monies, and to see how this potential amount will affect it. Because the original plan was to pipe the water out behind the power plant. This wasn't even on the table at the time. And I know there's going to be a public hearing coming up with regards to this with DEP, so it's still, the permit still has not been approved. But my curiosity is where we stand on the money aspect, budgeting-wise for this project so far spent, and where this particular allotment will fit into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I think probably trying to go into point-to-point on those questions is probably a little over my head at the moment. But what I will say is the amendment we're talking about here is jibing the comp plan with the capital improvements element that you've already approved. So we're really not changing the capital projects that you've approved, and certainly if that were to happen, that would come back to this board. But we're trying to sync it up with our comprehensive plan.
The one project that appears twice, the Pinellas Trail Extension, that is in two places because it affects two different levels of service, both transportation and a recreation level of service. So that's, it's one project, $400,000, but it's listed in both places for level of service issues for the comprehensive plan.
And if that denies any of your questions, you can always stop by and, you know, get those answers from staff. If there are no other questions, chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. I believe this concludes our agenda. Chief?
No comments, Mayor.
Attorney?
No comments.
The city manager?
No, sir. No comment.
First.
Just wanted to remind everyone, Tuesday, March 11th is the election. Remind everyone to go vote. Polls will be open from 7 to 7. They can also request a vote-by-mail ballot up until tomorrow at 5 by calling 727-464-VOTE or 8683. Or they can also vote early voting by going to one of the Pinellas County Supervisor Elections Office. The hours and times are listed on their website up until March 9.
Thank you. Commissioner Terpenny.
Although he's not here, I'd like to wish the city manager a happy birthday and also the vice mayor.
Well, Madam Birthday Girl.
No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Banther. What's your thoughts?
No comments.
And I don't have any comments, so we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:02.